I'm like, I'm never done being like that.
It's working smart. Nate, are you ready?
Outside, but really.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 12th meeting of the East Temple Township Planning Commission. Please rise and join me in opening the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, just make a mention, we have a couple of regular members are not in attendance this evening. So I would ask Ms. Reidenbaugh and Mr. Spangler to be voting members this evening. All right, the first item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on June 14th. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections? Okay, hearing them, ready for motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 14th meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All right, have a motion by Mrs. Byrne, second by Mr. Callis, that we approve the minutes of the June 14th meeting as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. That would be unanimous, seven to zero. One question though, John, did you vote? Did you vote?
Yes, aye.
Were you here?
Oh, no, I abstained. That's a good point. Wow.
About one abstention.
Abstention. Look at that. Well done. I stand corrected.
We forget.
Yeah.
Okay, the action item for this evening is the U-Haul final plan. So a couple, couple of things there, waivers, modifications, and the final land development plans.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Shank with McNeese Wallace and Newark, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Amerco Real Estate Company, which is the real estate holding entity for U-Haul. I'm joined by a pretty big group of individuals here. Mike Zumbo on behalf of Utah, U-Haul is here, as well as Paul Navarro, who is our civil engineer consultant. John Schick with Ratu, as well as Jeff Levin Good with U-Haul, and then several folks with Wolfson Construction as well are here this evening. So the property that we're here to discuss tonight is a 13.3 acre property. It's northeast of 283 and State Road. It's located in the Community Business Center zoning district. This is a section, a portion of the small section of land that's north of 283 that is zoned CBC. That's currently vacant agricultural land. The proposed use of the property is a U-Haul moving and storage center. It'll contain self-storage and U-Box facilities, which Mike can explain to you in a little bit more detail. Storage of recreational vehicles and boats, moving truck rental, and then the sale of buildings or moving supplies, boxes, packing tape, that sort of thing. You may remember this project, we were previously before you in early 2022, end of 2021, for a text amendment to facilitate this use in the CBC zone. That amendment was ultimately approved in March of 2022. We are in receipt of the McMahon review letter dated June 23rd, 2023, which indicates that all technical comments related to traffic are addressed, as well as the David Miller review letter dated July 7th, 2023. So at this point, I'm going to have Mr. Zumba come up and just provide a quick refresher on who U-Haul is and what they're looking to do at this site.
Good evening, Mike Zumba with U-Haul Company. Just kind of give a little bit of background again on U-Haul. This is our 70th year in business. We've been expanding and growing through independent dealerships and company facilities. We've actually been at our East Petersburg property here in Lancaster County since 1979. And since that time, when we first started, we did our truck and trailer share rentals, boxes and moving supplies, aftermarket trailer hitches, propane cells, things of that nature. We've been expanding and growing, and our research has led us to this property, and we're excited actually to be here, finally get to this point. But of course, we started getting into self-storage back in the late 70s, and we've been underserving this community for quite some time. So I'll give you a little bit of a further description on our intention here, just to re-familiarize everyone. So if you look at the site, when you're entering in by Randazzo's and also the Turkey Hill, you'll enter into the facility, and in the upper right-hand corner of the photo that you're looking at is going to be our U-Box warehouse. Our three-story building, which is the larger heading down towards Route 283, that's going to consist of a retail showroom, or we'll continue to sell boxes and moving supplies like we do at our existing facility. This will actually contain interior climate-controlled self-storage units. They're all individually alarmed access control by the key holder and the renter of the actual unit. The exterior, we're going to have a few drive-up units as well. And you look in the middle of the complex, we're providing covered boat and RV recreational vehicle storage on this facility site as well. And again, that's a little bit about what we're proposing to do here this evening. And one of the big reasons why we've expanded or are expanding is the need base for our continued services that we continue to develop and, and actually provide based upon customers' need. The U-Box component, we're currently doing it in a lot of facilities in and around Pennsylvania. We're just very limited in what we can do in this particular area. So again, this will allow us to expand service and help customers in their, in their need for moving and storage.
And this, this, I'll say layout is virtually what we saw before, is that correct? There's no major changes to orientations or anything.
Little alteration on where the covered RV is and the outside drive-up. We relocated the storage facility in our store closer to 283 and U-Box in the back, just to make the design and the actual access to work more fluidly.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Navarro from Navarro and Wright Consulting Engineers. As Claudia mentioned, we are the civil engineer for the project. And I'd like to thank these two gentlemen over here for working closely with us on some of the site challenges that we had here. We do, we are seeking several waivers, which we would like the planning commission to act on this evening. If I can, there's a letter dated yesterday summarizing those eight waivers. If we could, maybe take a look at those, and I can go through the justifications for those waivers.
As you do that, I will ask the planning commission members if they have any questions to ask them as we're talking about each one as we go through. So we don't have to come back, rehash it.
That would be just fine.
Ask questions before we go on to the next one.
Very early on in the project, we in, in that the property abuts the agricultural district, we worked through several alternatives on the buffer and tried to safeguard or, you know, properly screen while trying to achieve our stormwater management plan. So what is shown, I guess, if we have a rendering that perhaps better illustrates what the screening, final screening alternative will look like at full growth. It is a very, very, you know, thickly screened, I would say, against the northern boundary, along the eastern boundary as well. And then some of the, I guess, the abutting property which parallels 722 State Road. That is also something that was recommended for, that this waiver be granted. It's a, it's a modification for buffer planting strip C, section 265-8.7H2C. Are there any questions on that?
Can you just explain a little bit what the, what the alternate plan is instead of what was required? Could you walk us through that?
Well, the buffer was, was reduced in, in width from 30 to 25 feet. And the number of trees is reduced in some of the areas. We wanted to maintain some of the visibility from 283, just so people know where the facility is located. But overall, I think this is a, a plan that achieves the intent of the ordinance.
And was there any, I'll say, alternate planting of the ones that you reduced in those areas, were they added anyplace else? Or is it just a net reduction?
There, there was just areas that we were more or less restricted by some of the site elements for stormwater. There's a swell that is capturing the runoff from the farm that we're bypassing through the site. So in that, we're not allowed to plant any trees or other plants within that stormwater easement that kind of, some of those were relocated or repositioned on the site.
Yeah, there's, there's a buffer in, in the plan view, you can see there's a buffer where you can't put anything against the ag property. So there's a green strip, and then there's the, the planted buffer per the specs on the three sides of the site, basically. We kept the, the frontage to 283 was not as much of a concern with, with the buffering. And like was mentioned, there are some other, like, physical constraints in that area. I believe that the other buffer was, was enhanced. If you look at the plan view though, there's only so many locations on this project where you can go with extra landscaping. Because we do do that, like you, like you mentioned on some other projects, we'll say, if you don't put a tree here, put it somewhere else. But the rest of the buffer was, was planted pretty thickly. And like I said, on the top and on the right, on the north and on the east, you can see how there's an extra grass strip there. The idea of that is so that if the, when the trees grow to full height, they're not shadowing the agricultural lands and decreasing the productivity of that. So that's why there's that grass strip adjacent. But as we said in the front, there's a, there's a stormwater basin and, and some other issues. And, and again, there was a desire by the applicant to have some visibility from the roadway to the property for directional purposes.
Scott, what about like within terms of the impermeable? When it rains, that area, especially down in that corner area, it doesn't happen all that often. But when it does, the water comes hitting in there, and that area collects a lot of the water. So I'm just curious, in terms of putting more macadam and more on top of an area that's prone to having water runoff, if that was into consideration, or if that was something that was brought up?
And it is a low, it is a low area generally, like you said, but they did put their detention basin, and it is a rather large basin that they put in.
That's what I was curious because you're going into the highway.
Yeah, so if the basin would fill up in a larger, in a larger than design event, it does have an overflow that would take it down to the, the swell along the roadway and, and would, would take it away. But the basin has been located at a, at a spot where where it makes sense. And there is some other additional underground stormwater management, right?
There's some, there's some underwater, underground, yes.
Yeah, and there's some underground attention too, that doesn't quite show up in this rendering, but they've, they've also provided storage within the footprint of the site too.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one, or we'll move to the second?
Well, the next four, I guess, pertain to section 260 of the ordinance dealing with stormwater management. And as I'm sure you're aware, Lancaster County being underland by cross-topography areas, we conducted several studies here, not only for the structural foundations, but also hydrogeology. And it was determined that because groundwater is encountered at very shallow depths, that this MRC, managed release control methodology for stormwater management was the most suitable, where we could not infiltrate because of the possibility of creating or exacerbating some of the manholes. We did a geophysical study, ARM group from Hershey. They identified some pockets where a formation of these sinkholes, well, they already exist, that it was recommended not to infiltrate. So what we're applying for with DEP is for managed release control approval. We have submitted the MPDS permit. We received the first set of technical comments, which were passed on to your engineer. And we're waiting, we have responded to the comments, and we are awaiting approval sometime later this month. So those are the four waivers dealing with stormwater management, section 260, 19A, EF.
Yes, so is the if we approve these modifications, then is that all subject to DEP's reply? Is it possible that that would change anything?
Ultimately, it is. We, this plan was delayed in going to, to your, coming to your meeting because of waiting for that first review from DEP on the, on the MPDS permit, and in particular on that managed release concept. Because we wanted to make sure that they were going to accept that. They did accept it with the review, they had some technical comments, I believe that they had to address, but they weren't, they weren't global concepts. It would have changed the whole way that the stormwater management was.
So we have a high probability that this is.
Correct, correct. And the way, the way the, our stormwater ordinance is written doesn't quite line up with this managed release. So that's why these, these waiver, waivers or modifications are, are needed. It's probably something we'll have to look at. DEP kind of came up with this in the last 18 months, maybe, that they're really looking for this is the next step, if you can't infiltrate and manage volume.
Okay, then, modification number six?
That is just a plant scale.
Yeah, scale thing, okay.
And the section 265-8, the planting islands, I guess the ordinance requires us to have planting islands at certain spacings due to the access to the building, parking locations. We did provide islands at the edge of the buildings, but eliminated one in the center to, to facilitate handicap parking close to the entrance. We are providing, however, an extra parking space elsewhere.
And then number eight.
And we did submit a letter yesterday for this waiver of section 270-8 of the zoning, in that the ordinance provides for just parking of similar facilities. But we, we had conducted research for another project where we listed several ordinances in our justification letter of what some of those require. One was five additional spaces per 100 units, plus seven spaces for retail and 12 for storage, which gave us 19. And that was in Jupiter, Florida. We did another one that was 75 storage base, three spaces, which would be seven parking for retail, 14 for storage. So that was a total of 23. And the other one in Cranberry Township, Pennsylvania, same size, 100 storage units, plus three for management staff, and seven for retail, 14 for storage. It gave us 29, so we took an average of those three, came up with 24 spaces, which is typical for other U-Haul facilities as well. So the average was 24, so we are providing 25.
Ask a question on that.
Sure.
How many of those would be for employees?
Well, I guess some of the employees might do expect here.
I mean ballpark.
We have any work to do with the world and stuff.
Okay, so how many customers do you think you have onsite at any given time?
Actually, we've done a lot of research, so I can accept that on averages.
So you really only need like 10 to 12?
There rightly is. Yeah, and what we have to elaborate a little bit more on that, we'll communicate that we have interior load and load base for customers that are going to move the storage facility, plus we have external as well. Typically, when a storage customer, and then when I'm loaded, the general state of the business is around 10 to 12 months. Areas open, they come back and it's.
That makes sense. So I guess my point is, we're already well beyond what their actual capacity is, so I can't conceive that that would be a problem.
The, the intent when we modified the, the parking section of the ordinance again is to try and right-size it for what, for what these developers are using and not to dictate a higher sort of random number. So we do look for something like this, typically we look at the ITE manual. We do also look to, that they don't go too high. We don't want somebody that should have 20 spots saying they need 100 spots. And then the reason for that is we don't want the extra impervious coverage on the, on the sites. So we try and keep that at a minimum. It's not typical by any means that you would be recommending relief of a zoning ordinance section. This is a peculiar circumstance where the board gave themselves the right to give relief of how this is looked at and the standards that are used to determine the parking. So if that seems odd to you that you're giving relief of zoning, it's right, you almost never would. So that's a, that's a zoning hearing board, your, your partner group. So, so this is more the board will acknowledge this. They'll acknowledge the request for this use of an alternate standard, and then they'll move forward with it. We asked that they identified on the cover sheet, so everybody knows where we got to this point, 10 or 15 years from now, if somebody looks at the plan. But again, it's, it's slightly more of an acknowledgement of their request than a full granting of relief, because you can't grant relief of a zoning ordinance section. Hopefully that helped them to make it worse.
I guess finally, we did receive comments from the engineer on July 7th to our last submission. We have addressed those comments. I did email the letter earlier today, so it's probably hasn't had time to review it. But we addressed those comments in all, all of the comments. And we have an updated set of plans, which is also attached to the email, if anybody would like to see those.
So there was nothing in the comments that you would have take issue with or not be able to comply with, is that correct? Okay.
None.
Then we don't need to go through them in detail.
So we would ask for action on, on the, on the waivers.
I, I have a couple of questions on the plan, if you don't mind. When I was looking at the plan, I, you know, I was looking at some of the grading, some of the spots. Some of the contours seem like they create water that runs along the edge of the building, instead of flowing away. I saw some scenarios where there was a lack of high points or flow arrows. I saw some flow lines that looked like the drainage was flowing across the septic tank. Not quite sure if it's just not detailed enough that I can't pick up what's going on or not. But I did see some contours, and specifically looking up at your drawing right there, the large orange building, there's two contours in front that come in less than perpendicular to the building, which would mean that drainage is up against the face of the building. So I, I think there's some little more detail that could be added to the grading plan to ensure that the water flows appropriately away from the building and meets building code requirements. That's just one opinion I have. Everybody else is entitled to theirs, but.
But it, it's a relatively flat site, or we're flattening it out. So the grades of two and a half percent are not atypical for something like this. But if there's a conflict somewhere in the, in this picture, visit that. But the only, you know, areas that we have, the steep grading is up at the northern boundary. Again, that's a little steeper than desirable, but with our, we did a slope stability analysis, it works. I don't know where else we could, the pipe profiles are all compliant now at 0.5% minimum. So we feel that the drainage design is, is adequate and compliant with the ordinance.
So one example, one example that I'll point out here, north side of the big orange building. The contours are sloped towards the north side of the building, and there's no spot elevations to show that there's a gutter line other than up against the building.
I guess if you get a pointer there.
Yep, that whole north side, all those contours she flow into the north side of the big orange building without any.
Tankage that's in there, so it should, water should flow around that, but.
The contour through that curb island in specific, where that septic tank is, shows a V-channel going right through the, the curbed island. So that doesn't seem to coincide with the curb.
Should go there.
Any other questions? Okay, then, first word of business would be to look at the waivers and modifications. We have eight of those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of modification request one through seven, conditional approval of request number eight, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Danner, second by Mr. Bolby, that we recommend approval of modifications one through seven and conditional approval of modification number eight, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, seven to zero. Then regarding the calculations of the parking requirements, I believe we're at, we've been asked to make a motion to the board supervisors, is that correct? Or is it just the acknowledgement that the supervisors?
That's fine too, yeah.
What's that?
But what's, what was put at your spot?
I'll just make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of calculating the parking requirements using the alternate criteria in accordance with zoning ordinance section 270-8.2.8, subject to all staff and engineering. using the alternate criteria in accordance with zoning ordinance, section two seven zero dash eight point two point A, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Deter seconded by Mrs. Byrne. Do we recommend approval of calculating the parking requirements using the alternate criteria subject to staff and engineer comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be unanimous as well. And then we have the final land development plan itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation to, a motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for U-Haul Township file number twenty-one dash fifteen dot O two, subject to all staff and engineering comments. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Byrne and Miss Wright, seconded by Mr. Reidenbaugh, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for U-Haul, subject to all staff and engineering comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Six to one with Mr. Boltby objecting.
We had the July seventh letter.
Yeah. Now, the only thing added was that discussion about the parking. All the other, the other eight were already, were addressed in our, in our letter. You didn't add anything else.
No.
No, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very, thank you all.
Good luck.
Is there any old business to come before the commission? Any comments about the July project update that Nate sent in?
Everyone able to look at it now?
Yeah. Yep. Okay, is anybody in the audience that has any comments on the public?
Aye.
Thank you. Nate, nobody on Zoom?
Nope.
Okay. Being no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Seven thirty-two.